Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Whitney Hansen New York School meeting of August 21st, 2024. Reminding you that this is being taped so you can see it on the community access channel. So if everyone would please stand at their desks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, our nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I walk through a moment, I would like to say a few words about Fred. I know as everyone knows that Fred died of his leukemia.
Yep, I think so. Do you hear back there?
No.
No. How about now?
Yes, if you were louder, I think it would be fine.
Oh, okay. So just speak loud. So I've known Fred for many, many years. Fred and I were kind of adversaries when I was on the negotiating team of Whitney Hansen Union, and Fred would bargain against the union. So we had many little disagreements, shall we say, and also on the board. We will miss Fred. Fred was a voice. Fred was the voice of the town equipment. Fred was a voice for students. He was always here for that. He even came when he was ill. He would try to make the meetings. I will personally miss him because the last year or so, he has been, he was calling me about once a week to update on how he was doing and how he was feeling and other issues that he might have had. We will miss him on the building committee. He was the chair of the Whitmanville School Building Committee, so he will be missed there, too. Fred was always the one to tell us what was going on on Capitol Hill. He was always up to date on all that news, and that will again be missed. I know he was on a town committee, Capitol Committee, representative there, so I know that that will be, but he was about 15 years.
Yes. He was in his third term.
It was his third term. So big shoes to fill, and unfortunately that we had to do this. But I would like to dedicate this moment of silence to Fred from all of us, please. And thank you. We have Duo Training to stock. So this is.
I was gonna say, so Duo is our two-factor authentication program that all our faculty uses when they log into their machines in the morning to make sure that, that's another safeguard that we have, both breach, to make sure that we aren't infiltrated again by some outside source. So Brian, our network administrator, is gonna walk you through that Duo training. If something is missed through Brian, or if you have questions after the fact, I'm more than happy, George and I are more than happy to go through this with you to make sure that you can access your devices both in the building and outside of school. Duo will work from your home as well. Anytime you log into the Whitman Hansen account that you have. Go ahead, Brian.
Excellent. Awesome. So the first thing you wanna do is add it up on the screen here if you guys wanna follow along. You just open up a tab and I'll push you through this on your Google page. I'm trying. And I just do it on my phone.
Oh. I think you turned it.
Yes, you can probably do it on my phone.
I'm not connected to the network for some reason.
It's good standing for you.
Am I on the wrong network, maybe? Sorry.
You got Jason.
I actually have Duo for my own district already loaded up here, and they said it should be pretty seamless, so maybe that'll save you some of that problem. Maybe it's more annoying.
No, it's.
Oh, it's just.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll put it in.
What's an update?
Let me see. Okay. If you want Duo on your phone, you can go to the App Store on your iPhone or Google and type in.
Well, we have physical keys.
Yep.
If you don't want to use your phone, is if you have an option, whatever you wanna use.
A little louder. Is that what it is?
There you go.
Yes. That's good.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
May I have some assistance, please? Thank you. Sure, I have to click on this. I see where you. She said. Hold on. This is trial. I couldn't see that. Thank you. Same here. Sorry.
How is it? It's cold. I'm not.
Okay.
Yep.
Jesus. Thank you.
I didn't change the password. Could it be that my password is expired? Because I know we have to change it after so many.
Yeah, do you remember the one, the last time you changed it? Was it over a year ago? Okay, so.
I'm gonna introduce you here. Can you hold on a second? Okay, thank you.
It's just saying that it's incorrect.
You can continue on. I'll hold it down. I'm not sure if she has.
Okay, I can.
Keep going.
It's simple. Let me know.
All right. Okay, so I gotta hear when you call me.
Thank you. Thank you. You must have. I just want to check. Type in this.
It's made of. It's two. Five.
Check your password. Go, Brian.
Go ahead. Actually, we have a Google page on top. If you wanna click the Gmail button, you can go back to your seat. Gmail button double top. At the top, right?
Okay.
You click on that. And if you wanna click on Sign In, then that's gonna ask for the email address. The email address would be your first name dot last name at W H R S D dot org.
Let me change. I'll just change to that. It's easier to go.
After you check the email address, you should see a single sign on screen, which is the Duo. Then you wanna check in the email address one more time.
This went right to, right into my email. I didn't get to that screen. Should I log out and log back in? This went, when I clicked on Gmail, it took me right to my email. It didn't take me to this screen in between. Should I try logging out and logging back?
Yes, it may have.
Okay. Maybe I just already, I did. I was checking my email earlier before I came, so that's probably what I was gonna send out.
That's exactly what happened.
Is that, okay.
So it recognizes your addresses.
There we go.
Now if you wanna go.
Close that.
Yep. We'll fix that.
Actually, is that, is that still Google?
Yeah.
You have to sign out of that.
Oh, I did both of it? Okay.
Anything Google.
Okay, yeah, all of the things.
Yes.
There we go.
There you go. Let's open up Chrome again.
There we go. Okay.
So go.
This one. It's probably because. There we go.
Okay. Thanks.
And I'm gonna put that in again.
Type in your email address.
Thank you.
No problems. Oh, that's nice. Thank you. See, see, it won't hit my truck.
Typing your password. Is if anybody gets an invalid password or can't log in, let me know. I can reset, right up. Yep.
So I understand. Now we want such a password.
Want such a password?
Yeah. I was sitting here, and I was already in my email, so you said lock out just like that, and now it says.
Yeah.
Try. Try to do any Chinese if you have any. Tuesday, just a four as a password.
So you don't have to do the password. Oh, students, thanks twice, once a set.
Once a set. Yeah. Okay. Oh, did you wanna use the token or?
No.
You can download it.
I have.
Also, do first name. Okay.
Yeah. So the temporary password is capital W, lowercase h, r, s, d, two, zero.
What's that?
Two, four.
Sorry, sorry. So I, I never been the same issue as John, so I, I'm sorry. Why I didn't hear what you said with W H R S D? I'll try that instead.
Try that, yeah. It's a mean.
What are you?
Not you.
If two, zero, two, four.
Oh, two, zero.
I would have used the other one.
I know. There you go.
Capital W.
Yeah.
Okay, so we continue to have problems, I think, we'll finish this in the next meeting.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
We need to.
Yep. Do it early. There we go.
We can stay with you.
Figure it out. There you go. Well, excuse me.
It surprised me.
Yeah.
Can I use? Yeah. Right off.
This is a code. It's a, oh, that's a code.
Yep. This is. So same.
Yeah. Weird.
Yep.
Jason, yeah.
Sorry. Oh, it says some, okay.
You know, I've got special talents. Yeah, you thrust me into the, the thing you remember on this committee.
She gave you a good talk.
Must have.
Yeah.
I use fourth at twenty, twenty-four.com.
Okay.
Cool stuff.
Oh, I remember these back in the day.
You logged out, right?
Yeah, I didn't even do that. Sorry.
So Brian, we're just gonna move on. We'll, we'll, I'll get specifics of the committee. Both, we're also missing right now. Couple members, so we'll, we'll move on. If I have specific questions, they'll relate to you from tech or George and I'll figure it out.
Yeah, because I think I need to change my, I'm pretty sure I need to change my.
Then I'm, I'm gonna generate a new number.
If it's issues, we can work with them and get offset.
Yep. Thanks, Brian and Jason.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna move on. Next, we have meeting minutes between fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Just a double minute. Yep. I can create my focus. Thank you very much.
Okay, mostly was Dawn, David was second. Okay, are there any questions? Any discussion? Okay, we don't have anybody on the phone, so hold on a bit. Dave, Manas. Superintendent's report, please.
So in the, in the gallery today, we have two wonderful, brand-new administrators that I'd like to introduce to the committee. It's been a little bit of a turnover since last, you know, calendar year in 2025, we had some, some turnover. You've met Steven Marshall, the new Director of Business and Finance, and he'll be reporting out later on today. We have new staff in the buildings, but we had a new principal for the Duval School with the resignation of Dr. Foley. I'd like to introduce Dr. John Marcus. John, if you'd allow him to hit the podium. A little bit about John. He is a longtime elementary teacher, principal, then became the Assistant Superintendent in Sharon and Technology. So John's gonna fix all your Duo problems today.
Yeah.
It's his other half. And then he served as the Superintendent at Stoughton for a few years, and then went back to his passion, which is elementary principal, and we were lucky enough to have, to have him come over from Norton and be the leader of the Duval Dolphins. And he's got a nice little YouTube video that's gonna be out soon of a dolphin. So, John, if you could just introduce yourself a little bit and see if you would.
Thanks so much. I appreciate being here. It's, it's been an absolutely wonderful summer meeting, all kinds of incredibly dedicated staff, students, families. I feel very privileged to be able to be the principal over at Duval and, and very privileged to be able to work with the central administration team, work with Jeff side by side during COVID, and it was, and he's always been absolutely phenomenal, a great colleague and a wonderful leader, and so I feel very privileged to be able to work with you and George and Nikki. So thank you so much for the opportunity. Look forward to some more dolphin pride as we, as we head into twenty-four, twenty-five.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And with the resignation of Michael Loesch to become the Executive Director of Social Collaborative, a few phone calls were made, and Dr. Gadino was very interested in coming to Whitman Hansen. Dr. Gadino, he was a special education teacher, a Director of Special Education, an Assistant Superintendent for the Town of Avon, and a Superintendent for the Town of Avon, and then came back to her true passion, which was special education. I'd like to introduce Dr. Christine Gadino as our Director of Special Education.
Hello. I will not have a video for you. I echo Dr. Marcus's remarks, where it's been a wonderful experience transitioning here through the extended school year programs and enrichment programs. I've got to meet, gotten to meet quite a few of our students and staff, and it's really a joy to be here. The, the staff I've met are extremely talented and dedicated to the students in central offices, giving me such a warm welcome. It is a breath of fresh air, and I'm really excited to be here, so thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So, so through your emails, you know, it was a pretty busy summer, too, administratively over on the Hansen type of the train tracks. Dr. Joel Jocelyn became the Assistant Superintendent in Sharon, not replacing John, but in a similar, they've had some, some conversation. So Joel left in, in July. We posted for the position, and through our screening team, which considered, consisted of central administration, principals, teachers, and some parents, we couldn't find a candidate that we thought would be a good fit for Indian Head. So after that search, we made a, a move to Bill Trantor, the Principal of Hansen Middle School, to do a dual role. You all know Bill, so I didn't invite him here. And then as things shook out a little bit last week, George and Nikki and I necessarily weren't super comfortable with Bill doing a dual role because it's extremely difficult, and it's really not the best for staff and students. We had a heart-to-heart with Josh Belvis, the Assistant Principal, and he is now the interim principal at Hansen Middle School. Bill is the Indian Head Principal, loving life. He had a funky little hat on today that he's gonna be wearing around town, but really has been rejuvenated. I think this committee all knows Josh. Josh will be here at some point presenting. We are now in the process of interviewing, interviewing an interim Assistant Principal, which the interviews will go on tomorrow. So Hansen Middle School administrative team will be solid, hopefully by Friday. They're all internal candidates, so it's all people George, Nikki, and I know very well, and we're very confident that one of the, any of the three that are selected will be, will be solid, which means if one of those folks get the job, we'll be looking for an interim. It's a domino effect as we go. But it is a new leadership team from central office and at the building-based level, and we are pretty confident, very confident, in all of the leaders that we have, that it will be a collaborative approach throughout the, the school year, and our kids are in awesome hands with the folks that we have with boots on the ground in our buildings. So, and like I said, Steven feels like old Pat now. He's been here since, since June, and we were able to introduce him in the early spring. So those are our new admins. We do have a new Assistant Principal at Duval, and I will have Ashley Craig come over at some point and introduce herself, but she was busy putting things together for Open House and things like that, so, and not adding a night for her is something that I didn't wanna do at this point. So those are our new admins. Going into summer and, and how we are moving forward to the fall. Summer's busy at Whitman Hansen, and we never, ever close. This summer, we ran our pre-K E S Y, both a three-week and a five-week program. At Conley, we had Camp Conley for three weeks. Duval had our E S Y program for five weeks. Whitman Middle School ran a six-week summer sports camp. Hansen Middle School had a four-week summer sports camp, and the high school had a robotics camp, a 3D camp, a science camp, sports camps, both basketball and soccer. The Plymouth County Dare Camp was here. We had our Twenty-First Century Summer Program for high school and middle school summer students, which was an enrichment program for four weeks. Our E S Y for high school was also here, and, and we had traditional summer school. So as we tour, and I'm gonna go into, as we tour tomorrow, Facilities Department had a, had a heavy load because our buildings were being used for the majority of the summer. So it crunches down into the last two, two to three weeks of summer for us to build our buildings back up for our students who will be arriving, can't believe to say it, a week from today. They will be coming in. The past three days, we had new teacher orientation. We have hired 21 new staff members who replaced vacancies, new determinations, maternity leaves. We had quite a few, not quite a few, but more than I like, teachers not returning and wanna stay at home for a additional year with their, with their children, resignations and retirement. We did not add any new positions to our teaching staff. However, some will say, well, did you add positions? Well, we did. We ended up adding a few one-to-ones for students who we need to accommodate their I E Ps or their individualized education plans per federal requirements if they're required to have a one-to-one. So there might be some new additions. People say, oh, you only had, you know, 105 pairs last year. This year you have 110. Well, it's because we have to follow the guidelines of certain students' I E Ps based upon their individual needs. The other piece that I, I need to let the committee know is, this year in particular, we have a greater amount of medical need from students that are severe medical need. It's not like, you know, changing a Band-Aid every now and then for our school nurses, and the school nurse position has bloomed, blossomed over the years, treating students with diabetes and other types of illness, but this year in particular, we have a heavier need, or medical need for students. So you might hear, or you might hear from some students, the clinic was closed for 15 or 20 minutes because that nurse is doing a medical procedure, and we don't have a float nurse for that day. That doesn't mean the students aren't gonna get medical care if there's an emergent need, but if somebody's got, needs a cough drop or need, may have to go to the office for that cough drop for 15 or 20 minutes because we have some severe medical needs, mostly on the Hansen side, but Whitman is not without their fair share of students that have those needs. Oh, and preschool, and, you know, where, yeah. Preschool absolutely has more than, more than three students that have severe medical issues this year. Luckily, we've been able to staff our nurses with some floaters, and we have a lead nurse, and at this point, that suffices. Lisa Tobin said we're good, but if something crashes midway through, I might be coming to the committee saying, I have had to hire more medical care for our students. I don't think this is a trend. It's not gonna ebb and flow, but we're probably gonna have more students coming in with different medical needs because we're an inclusive district, and we wanna have the least restrictive environment for not only our students who have developmental challenges, educational challenges, but medical challenges as well. Some of these students might have ended up at the Mass Hospital School years ago, or trying to make sure that they're here for the best educational experience in their hometown that they can have. So I will brief you with, with those as we go through the course of the year. Our buildings and grounds are prepped, ready to go. We're gonna have a tour tomorrow. You'll be able to see some things. Also, today, the state has put in a new I E P or new Individual Education Plan Program, so we had new I E P training for those staff that were here today. And I just wanted to give you an idea of where we're at enrollment-wise, because that's always, I don't have class sizes yet. I wanna see how things flesh out. Our counseling department has been a little crazy the past couple of days, but our high school right now, as it is, we have 992 students registered, nine through 12 with the high school. 14 students additionally are registered for C E S, or our Community Evening School. Indian Head School has 503 students with 92 kindergarten students, five teachers. That's, I will tell you where we're at with K. They have five staff members for 92. Hansen Middle School has 451 students registered, five through eight. Whitman Middle School has 501, registered six through eight. Duval has 427, 73 of which are kindergarten students, and Conley has 493, 71, or 74, which are K students. Conley and Duval have four sections each for K, so we have plenty of staff for our kindergartners, and by way of making another shock, the class of 2,037 has 239 students. So our K students, the class of 237, I'm gonna be long line, has 239 students registered, which is actually, I did a little backtracking. It's down, but now we can anticipate that coming forward. The, the N E S D E C survey that we did when we did the middle school building project has been pretty online. We should be pretty consistent with the 70s in kindergarten, with Hansen being a little bit more because it's just one town. We should be pretty consistent, so planning forward in 10 years, I think that's gonna be your, your freshman class size minus whatever goes to vocational programs, but we might be under 200 by 2027 for that class. So it's good for the committee to know. It's good for the towns to have an idea, and I encourage both towns, when they start talking building projects, which will be in Indian Head, Conley, or Duval in the next 10 to 15 years, start looking at enrollment, because those buildings are not getting any, any younger, and it might be some time to discuss merging one or, or combining some things. Not saying that yet, but just something for the committee to know before we open opening day. Any questions about opening or summer review? Okay. In your packet, we have a very brief for handbook approval. Dr. Jones in the high school handbook, they didn't make any major modifications in it this year, so I'm just looking for a motion and an approval of the two changes that Chris had updated on vision of the graduate and student tardy. Excuse me, there are more that I didn't see back to back. Just sort of the handbook changes as, as is, or if you have any questions. I was hoping Chris might be here, but he's running freshman orientation concurrent with the school committee meeting tonight, but I just need a motion and acceptance of, of these handbook discussions, or handbook changes. Just so you know, this was, Chris has a handbook committee that's run by the Dean of Students, Chris Gugans, with students and teachers, and then he brings this to a school council, which has students and parents. The committee approved it, the school council approved it with no issue. I'm bringing it to the school committee. So it's, it's what the, the staff members, the students, and the parents of the school council have voted on and have submitted to you.
Okay, can I, do I have somebody motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
David? Okay. All those. One question.
Yep. Discussion.
I was hoping Dr. Jones was gonna be here. I said we had a question, so I'll present. Two things. One, on the tardiness, so it, on the first page appears that he's making the change to accommodate more tardies before.
Before getting in trouble.
Right.
Yeah.
Before.
Before a consequence.
More disciplinary action. So I more or less wanted to ask, you know, the reasoning for that, and then at the top it says that calendar bell schedules and staff updates will be updated as needed, so I didn't know what updates to the bell schedule he might anticipate. Do you?
So let me just go with the tardy. I, I don't disagree with adding that fourth, because really, it's a, it's a, kids come in tardy for a variety of reasons, and sometimes it's two minutes, and no matter, the consequence is the same consequence, whether you're two minutes late, or eight minutes late, or half hour late. So we've had this discussion for years. A tardy policy is, is something that I'm not, I don't love tardy policies because we've actually seen, George and I have seen kids turn around in the parking lot so they don't get a consequence. I'd rather get them in here, so I think giving those students an opportunity to maybe have four and having those, those coachable conversations about why, and then having some flexibility isn't, isn't necessarily a bad thing. And I believe this probably came right from the kids themselves, want a little bit more, but the parents are the same, especially with the traffic patterns that we have. As far as the calendar and bell schedule, I think he, he is putting in a new schedule right now, and that necessarily wasn't ready when we put this together in June.[1741.94] I don't think he's updated it. But if you have a further question on that, what I can do is shoot him a text. We can table this conversation for a little bit more. He is in the building, and I'll just shoot him a text if he can get here and answer those questions. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. Well, I'm thinking, if I make an assumption, he's probably thinking it might need to, if it needs to be tweaked, a minute here, a minute there, around lunch, or around something, but the overall bell schedule for the day is not anticipated to change.
No, no, it's a 7:05.
Yeah. The length of the school day will not change. What's going to take place is that they're now going to an eight-period day for all students. So in going to an eight-period day for all students, and they also have a new wind block, in doing that, he did take a minute or two off the lab locker periods so that we could make sure that all our minutes are met throughout the end of the school year.
Speak of the devil, his ears were burning. I don't know if you want to be here, but, Chris, we're actually going right over the handbook stuff right now, and...
...change of the bell schedule. You know, the comment, Mr. Blackwell's made to me, it's a change.
I would like, I would love to say yes, but I don't know if that, I can check that. I can actually, give me two minutes, I can go find out.
It's not really about, just at the top, you had mentioned it may, you know, the bell schedule may change. So that was all what I anticipated.
I, start times the same, end times the same. I believe we did change it because we just updated the new faculty members, too. Like, at the beginning, we have that disclaimer that staff updates will be done as needed. So I believe that is all updated in the handbook.
Okay. And then Superintendent helped me to understand the tardiness was, you know, increased to give a little more leeway, not leeway, but, you know, the additional tardy before consequences.
Yeah, and we're trying to help the students out a little more and give them a little more responsibility, because that third one where they used to get a detention right off the bat, now they get a written warning. So we deal directly with the student more to say, okay, like, this is for real. You could, you get a detention next time.
So my discussion around this handbook itself, again, is really going to go back to, are we doing the best for the students around our strategic plan, right, making decisions in the best interest of the students? And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the 7:05 time again, just because it's been 10 years since the American Academy of Pediatrics recommenced. Schools don't start before either. Last meeting, we looked at tardiness, and you provided the reports. And Superintendent stated the goal is to keep tardiness under 1% of our population. And the minutes we just approved show that from 2015, the tardiness was .2. In 2016, it was .3, and it's been under 1%.
Can I just clarify? That's the dropout. That's our dropout rate, not the tardy rate.
Oh, dropout.
Yeah, you were quoting the percentage of the dropout. I was like, I'm not going to get tardiness under 1% if I can. I'm going to write a book, you know?
Okay. So tardiness, and I guess, so let me reframe my thought here. To your points of concern, too, you said, when a student's going to be tardy, if they know they're going to get punished, they'll just leave. They won't come to that tent. Okay, so an absence continues, more absences, and then they begin to have them happen. We don't want dropouts. So essentially, our dropout rate now is 1.5% in the most recent reports. And I just ask, you know, are we setting policies? Are we setting handbooks and bell schedules that's best for our students? We just made a decision in the best interest of students. And he had, and he had some middle to provide administration, right, to support students. And we talked about the medical issues here at the high school. We're supporting students in every way we can. And I think if we can do better, we should continue to look at it. It was a goal two years ago, which didn't make it very far. So I, in looking at this, that we're voting on here for the handbook, unfortunately, I can't support it. I've gotten to a point where I can't even support that bell schedule.
Any other comments? Discussion?
It's a different issue.
Sure.
On the discrimination aspect of it, I have the word sex, which I'm taking to mean biological male or female. Then there's a word, page 48, gender identity. Who determines that identity? I would like this removed. Biological sex is male or female. I don't understand gender identity. Who determines that, other than their birth certificate? And I would like some words added to it, saying only females playing female sports, only males playing male sports.
That feels like a much larger conversation.
It's a much larger issue. That would be an issue on itself that would be discussed. If you see other towns and places that discuss that, so it wouldn't be something that we could take up right now. That would be a larger discussion at another time that we could do.
Okay.
Not to interrupt your discussion.
No, that's fine.
Just like, that's a big discussion.
Get that conversation going.
Yeah.
We can add that as an agenda item.
Yep.
But I would like the term gender identity removed.
You're talking on page 48, though. Page 48, Steve?
Yes.
That, that is, that's what we have to put in, because it's part of the Massachusetts law. So it's part of Title IX of the 1972 Educational Amendments, Chapter 76. The general laws of Massachusetts has amended, so, gender identity. So we are bound legally that we have to put those things in our handbooks, because that's what Massachusetts has determined as a law.
So this is a quotation directly from?
Yes, sir.
I understand. Okay. Thank you, George.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of the handbook? Please raise your hand. And again, okay, so 42.
Okay.
Okay. Well, notice that there aren't other handbooks for us to go over? That's because there were no changes other than teacher names, administrative names, no changes in the elementary and middle school handbooks. That's why you do not have those. So there's no changes. Do we need to vote, then, if there's no changes?
No. That was voted last year.
Okay. I'll see this so far.
Okay, in your, or just in, on the agenda, we have quite a few surplus requests that we need to vote each individually, or you want to take them all as a group?
No, I think we can take them all as a group.
Okay. So in ELA, excess surplus of Tequila Mockingbird. History Department is declaring books surplus request principally in practice. Thinking About Psychology, The Science of Mind and Behavior, The Family Encyclopedia of American History, that's, that's an oldie.
I guess so.
And even in E, okay, why don't we take books separately and then cafeteria requests after that?
Yeah.
So I'm looking for a motion and acceptance to declare these books surplus and dispose of them the best way we can.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Excellent. Thank you. Another clause. Food Services is declaring surplus, broken kitchen equipment. So the equipment that's broken, if you want to get rid of, it has to be declared surplus first.
That's a separate one.
Yes.
Cabinets and the microwave steamer. Easy. So can I have a motion? Or not?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Just got to know.
Thank you. Now, this isn't a surplus, this is a donation. So we got a call from this vendor, who is donating $51,900 worth of scrubbers for our schools. And they're going to be in route very soon, as soon as we accept those scrubbers that we can use in facilities. Got to, George?
So what's nice about this is that...
These are not floor scrubbers, we originally thought they were. These are air scrubbers.
So if you think back to COVID, when you were buying air, or when you had times of sickness in schools or hospitals, these are movable, they're on wheels, and they can be put in high areas, like obviously, like a second floor, or hallway, or staircase, or if there's a school that's experiencing, like, there seems to be 47 kids out with a stomach bug at Conley, we can move these to there. They have their HEPA filters and all of these pieces. The company had an excess. We made a connection with the company, so they called Ken Hurstak, who is the office manager, as it were, and so we graciously accepted them. Our goal is to put several in each building, and then move them and use them as need. Because they are movable, I mean, but they're kind of big, they're about 5D high, and they're wide, and they are movable. Because of that, if there is a certain issue, like, remember a few years ago, we had that bad thing at Conley, and they got shut down for the day, or whatever, we can then put more there after we do a deep clean, so that we can try to keep the air as pure as can and keep people healthy.
I just need a motion.
Motion to accept the 36 A, Carrier Opti Clean Air Scrubbers from DCNE.
And do I have seconds?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, all in favor, please? Seven all.
And then one more donation. I received this letter. This letter is to inform you and the district of my attention on, at our August 21st school committee meeting, to donate a new Acer Chromebook Plus 514. It is my pleasure and an honor to be able to donate a Chromebook every year to the district for use, just like any Chromebooks we have had for our students and staff. This year, I'd like to dedicate this donation in memory of our longtime-standing Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee member, Mr. Frederick M. Small, who passed on July 29, 2024. In addition, if letters of appreciation be sent to Mrs. Nancy Hoover Small, Fred's widow, and to the children of Mr. Small, Janelle and John Smith, and John and Julian Cookson, thank you in advance for accepting this donation and allowing me to recognize Mr. Small. Fred would be greatly missed. Sincerely, Mr. Steven D. Boyce.
Motion to accept.
So do you want to say something, Steven, before?
Sure. Here it is. You know, I told Fred years ago, oh, good, we're crossing each other. Let's kick footballs like we used to make at high school. You know, you always got to keep it white with Fred, because you never knew what was coming next. He kicked my fanny just like he would kick anyone else's, but then he had some good news from me later. One of the proudest things I saw was him talking with David, and various things. And his willingness to help David, and David, I'm not signaling out you, but you're brand-new. You know, this was a lot on your shoulders as a teenager, turning just 20 at the time. I don't know, you're 86 or something. But I've always been proud of David, and Fred and the David thing just meshed in my head, and, you know, I, David, you're going to carry on in such ways, and you kind of remind me a little bit of Fred. I don't want to say much. You've got the questions, and you know the answers. You have thought out things, you research, but I know this is about Fred, but, you know, a torch is always passed on. And so I wanted to kind of fit that in there. The other two things I'm doing is Fred's birthday's in January, he's a year younger than me. When I'm at a Bruins game in January, unless Mr. Ferro takes my tickets, I want to put his happy heavenly birthday up on the Jumbotron at the TV Garden. I've done that for, before, but the heavenly birthday part, happy birthday part is, you know, near and dear to me. And I plan on, as the president of the Board of Trustees at the Coburn Cemetery Association, having a moment of silence for Fred. I went and visited him a couple Mondays ago. You know, he's right in the perfect spot. We take good care of things over there, we've been around a long time. And he's up, he's not up on the hill with the Whitmans, but he's got a good view. So, you know, I know it sounds like who I am, I just don't want to be too emotional, but Fred has added a lot, like Beth had said earlier. And you go back and forth with him for a little while, and then there's always, there seems to be this miraculous understanding. So I thank you all for accepting this.
Sheriff, if I may?
Yes.
Can I share a few words, Joe, if you don't mind?
Sure.
You know, over the last couple of weeks, I've had a lot of time to reflect amongst a lot of things pertaining to the committee, but specifically towards Fred. And I'd like to share just a couple of words from my own personal experience with Mr. Small that maybe the community and our colleagues on the committee aren't necessarily privy to. You know, one of my first experiences with Fred was actually my freshman year of high school, when it was a committee member, or a community member, who would post updates about the school committee. He's now on the Board of Selectmen, but one of the things he shared was a school committee meeting and a clip of Fred in the tag. And it was my first time watching a school committee meeting and learning about it. And flash forward a few years later, I'd have the opportunity to reach out and speak to these committee members as a student and trying to advocate for more services to our district. At that point in time, it was actually Fred and the chair of the school committee who had approached me, gave me their phone numbers, and said, if there was anything that you ever need, or anything you want to share, please give us a call. And it was a few years later, that, or a year or so, when I ran for school committee and won, one of the first people to actually reach out to me was Fred. And he said, please give me a call, I'd love to talk to you. And I was greeted with the press one for Fred. And I, you know, and I picked press one, and Fred, there he was, and he thanked me, and he said, if there's anything you need, you know, feel free to give me a call. And, you know, over the last few years, of course, you know, Fred and I, we've had our disagreements, particularly towards the budget season, but Fred has helped me improve as a person. You know, he's challenged me, he's helped me think differently. And reflecting, of course, over the last year, I got to see a different side of Fred that wasn't necessarily reflective of the bureaucrat that people try to project onto us who serve in these elected roles. I got to, you know, talk with Fred after meeting about, you know, cars, after I bought mine, or, you know, about family, or just talk about different perspectives after we've had, you know, some terse deliberations. And he's always been open and honest, and he's treated me with respect and decency. And it's those type of conversations that deliberations with, understanding that we may have different objectives or a different pathway, but we have the same common goal of trying to improve our community. And my experiences with Fred will long last my time on this committee, and I'm very appreciative of that, and that is how I will choose to remember him. And I'm very thankful for that, and I thank for the opportunity.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept.
Motion.
Oh, you did motion? Okay. Second?
Second.
Second, David? Okay. All in favor of accepting? Thank you, Ms. Boyce.
Thank you. Thank you.
Some good news.
So, good evening, members of the school committee. I am pleased to get to share with you that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has awarded Hanson Middle School the 21st Century Grant. So this is the same grant that supports after-school enrichment for the high school, Whitman Middle School, starting next year. And as we had hoped, we will now support Hanson Middle School. It is our plan to start September 30th in all three locations with transportation. And I just want to give a special shout-out to Chris Scutec for all his work. He's our director, our coordinator for the program, for the grant program, and he does a lot of work. So I just wanted to publicly thank him. So, we got it. Yay!
Thanks, Nikki. Mr. Marshall? Steven?
Okay, just to give everybody a heads-up, Steven will be giving all of the April information in our September meeting. This one, he's giving us an overview. This is his first one actually presenting to us. So if you have any questions, you can also ask.
Thank you. Just a few quick updates on, on kind of where we are. A few audits that everybody knows are still out there and happening. Our FY '22 audit, we believe, is complete. We had a last request from the auditors on Monday for just a last few items, which were provided. So we hope soon we will have, you know, some formal documentation back to them and be able to close out FY '22, and we'll immediately start working on the '23 audit. So that's just the update on, on where we are for audits. For FY '24, our revenue came in $97,000 above what was projected. I believe Mr. Stanbrook was projecting around $100,000 over in our revenue for '24, so we came in just right there where he was projecting. We do have all of our revenues for '24 loaded into Munis. We continue to work on loading all of our expenditures from FY '24 into Munis. At that point, we'll be able to close out FY '24 and start working on the end-of-year report for DESI. Hoping to have that stuff done through the fall, but it will take some time to get everything kind of loaded into Munis. For FY '25, we have our budget totally loaded into Munis, and we have started, our full accounts payable procedures are all happening in the Munis program. We've started doing training, almost complete, in the schools with our admins, principals. And so all purchase orders, all of our purchasing, all of our checks for FY '25 are being cut out of Munis, and that has been happening. So good news on that front as we kind of move forward. We'll continue building and loading everything into the financial software program, and we'll be able to start reporting out to the committee and to the community out of the financial software program.
And just to add, Steven, again, the committee's been briefed on John's role right now. He's doing some special projects, so he's closing out FY '22, which has been hours and hours and hours of paper and reports. He'll start on FY '23, and he's simultaneously working on the request from the two communities that audit that is being run by the person that's working with it, is Mr. King. And John is working with him to get him all the information that he wants for the Whitman and Hanson audit of the school district. So John's working on three different audits at this point right now. Steven's focusing in on closing '24 and into '25. And Munis is fully, it was going to be fully up, so you're getting those paper reports sooner than later.
Just the Mr. King?
He's working for the audit company that found select this.
K-I-N-G-K?
Yeah, he's the former business manager from Wolfham, I believe.
Thank you so much.
They hired a person by the name of Abrams.
Mark Abrams.
His group. Working with this Mr. King. And he's working with former business director. The type of audit that they seem to be conducting is not like a forensic audit where you're just talking budgetary. They're looking at school district profiles. They're looking at paperwork. They're looking at procedures. So John has been working with him. They both been, both are now retired business managers. So a lot of the things they're looking for, they have their own special lingo that they cannot, that they seem to be communicating well. So he's also working on that for him, too.
And I think the towns had asked for a three-month turnaround, so I think that puts us somewhere in October. But when we had our conversation with Mr. King, I said, our priority right now is closing FY '22 and '23 because it has a direct impact on our borrowing for the building project. So he was clear with that. And again, it's not a lot of heavy lifting, but it's still lifting. So we're being compliant and trying to get that done. FY '22 was a bear. I'll just tell you that. 60, 70, 80 hours of man-hours just on that, and they keep asking for more.
Because when I talked to John two weeks ago, he had said what he thought was going in. And then you said he got a few more.
He got six more requests.
How many?
Six.
Six more. Yes.
Do we anticipate the FY '23 audit is going to be similarly demanding or not?
Well, probably not. This is, I've been able to front-load that post-bridge.
Okay. Oh, okay, got it. Thank you.
So we should be, it's a better, it's a better process.
Okay.
'23 files are a little more digital.
Yeah.
It gets better.
Yeah.
And just Karen, in case you didn't know, a lot of that had to be done finding paper.
Right.
Because everything's lost.
Right. So. That makes sense.
The archives and the trailer.
The trailer.
Wherever. Information to dig. So this should be a lot of '23.
Great.
Yes.
So we had a question on FY '24 closeout. What is the DESI deadline to submit end-of-year FY '24? And do you expect meeting that if most available information is already?
So the deadline is September 30. We have an extension request into DESI. I do not expect to meet the September 30 deadline. So we're, you know, hoping for a November 30 deadline if we can. But it might be the end of the calendar year. But my hope is to not be, you know, past January. But I'll have a better update probably in a month from now, once we get everything loaded into Munis.
Our goal is really November 30. We're going to shoot for it. But I mean, what, we can't tell what's going to happen, happens. So, you know. And Associate Commissioner, Mr. Sullivan, knows Whitman-Hanson very well. We're on first-name basis.
Well, if you can meet in November 30, then it's my understanding that this is a position to catch for to get payments on the regional transportation reimbursement, which is typically from January and first of the year. Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Steven? Thank you, Steven.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I can do it. All right, so new business tomorrow. For those of you who can make it, tour is, starts here at 10:00 a.m., goes to approximately 2. It depends. We go from here, we go through the high school. From here, we go to Indian Head, and then Hanson Middle. And then we come back to Whitman and go to Duval and Conley, and last is Whitman Middle. That's what the tour is. You know, it's very interesting because if you haven't been to all the schools, it's really good for people, you know, if you're from Hanson to see the Whitman schools, Whitman to see the Hanson schools, and to meet some of the administrators, too, that we get to meet. And you find out about projects that had to be worked on over the summer, anything that needed to be fixed, or things that they're still working on. So if you can make it, we'd appreciate you here at 10:00 a.m. If you are unable to make it at 10, but would like to, you can just text Jeff, and he'll tell you where we are if we're at a different building, and you could meet us at that building.
And if you don't have my number, let me get it. I'm just not going to say it. Every kid's going to be like, when do we cancel the schools? When is this noted?
You can just email me.
You guys all should have my phone anyway.
This is, sorry, I'm waiting for, I wait for Beth. That's nice. I wanted to ask about the additions for the special ad that we had transferred over.
Yeah.
Is that finished?
Yes.
Get a sense of that?
Yep.
Okay.
You'll be surprised at how different it is.
Oh, awesome. Great job. Thank you.
Yeah, it's really good.
Just speaking of the tours, I was telling Jen, but as much as well what you folks know, depending on the night at the museum at JFK tonight, in the iPads, if they don't run around the museum, I should be good to go, but I'll let you know in the morning.
Yep, should be texting.
Whatever, you can, whatever you can make it. Okay, so we have school committee vacancy and the process to fill. So Selectmen decided, they did last night, it is going to be, we're going to post it. We'll repost it. And the process is that it'll go out. They will have two weeks to submit their resumes. And from there, Mary Beth Carter, the administrator of Whitman, will give all of us, all Whitman members, copies for you to peruse. And then it was determined that the 12th of September, we were going to meet as. But one of our members is not going to be able to make the 12th. So we have been asked, actually by the Selectmen, if we could change the date. So we don't have an official date right now, but it'll either be the last week in September or the first week in October. I'm going to talk to Mary Beth tomorrow and decide, but this just came up this morning. So we not have. So if you know anybody who is interested, tell them to update their resume and get it in. It is a little bit tough to do. I had, that's how I got on. Because you submit your resume, if they accept it, you go, and you have to go before the five and five members. And they each ask a question, or they, like Fred asked me three. Thank you, Fred, again. And you're trying to remember what was the second question. And you're on TV. And then they vote and choose at that point in time. And so then we would have a new member would have to go before the town clerk, okay, and get sworn in. Now, that position would only last until May election for, to fill in. Fred's was, he just got elected, so he has, the person has to run. Their term will only be two years if they run in May. So that'll be a two-year term. Steven, I think you had to do a two-year term, too. So it's the same as that. So they finish out this year, they have to run, and it'll only be a two-year term instead of a three, because they're finishing Fred's out. Okay, so just to let anybody know. Yes, Rosemary?
So I had some concern with this because I kind of dove into the laws a little bit. It looks like there's been a correction. Because when you did it, the Selectmen had done it, and that's not appropriate. The Selectmen, we're our own body under 71, and so just like, they can't dictate the budget. So it's supposed to be the school committee, the governing body, is the school committee. It is not under any.
No, it isn't. We have, but we're just.
It is not the Selectmen. So, and that has been clarified.
It's a joint meeting.
It shouldn't be, actually, and we can go back and we should double-check this. It has to be the school committee that picks it. We are the legal governing body. And it was improper when it was done before.
That's our reading agreement, though. So our regional agreement is off. So the regional agreement is, is a joint venture between the Select Board.
Could you, I'll double-check it because I have it at home, but could you tell me what part of the regional agreement it is?
The selection of members. And if a member vacates.
Thank you.
It's a joint, so, and it's, each school committee member that's left has an equal vote, as each Board of Selectmen member has an equal vote. So when Chris Howard left in Hanson, there were five Select Board members and only three school committee members. So it was an eight-member vote. In Whitman, because there are six members, it'll be a five and five vote of the.
So it's Whitman's.
Only Whitman. It's only the town that the person's leaving that office of the town that they represent.
Yes, Karen?
Sorry, can I just go back? So, because I was actually going to ask this question, and I think, I think I'm clear on the answer. But I was, I was, so I remember, Beth, when you were brought on to the school committee, and then when Chris stepped away, I thought there was an election. Did he, did he resign his position coinciding with the election? So there was no, so the reason is just that gap between the election and?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
He resigned, like.
Yes, to coincide. Yes, okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Chris, yeah, he announced that he was resigning at the election, so election day was.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure the process was the same between towns. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Because we go by, we go by the rack, so that's, that's it. Okay, yes, Dawn?
You mentioned the school committee's going to post. So can you clarify again for people watching? Okay. Who do they need to email that they're interested?
It'll be on there, but it'll be, it goes to Mary, the resumes get sent to Mary Beth Carter, the town administrator for Whitman.
Okay. And when you say post, is that what is?
Well, I was going to announce that it's open.
Is it going to be on our website?
It'll be on our website. It should be on the town website as well.
Okay.
And I would like to put something in the express, just that there's a vacancy.
Should there be a public, does it need to be a public notice?
I think there should be, just like a vote.
What, what do you mean a vote?
Like, just like you would, we'd want the public to be aware that there's openings, just like we would for elections.
So, so that's why, it comes from the clerk as well and over at Town Hall. And from our side of it, we would put it on our website that there's a vacancy, and this is the process to fill that vacancy.
And we did the agreement that, you know, we didn't have a joint meeting to discuss the dates because we knew Selectmen were meeting last night, we were meeting tonight. And so we had the discussion of what worked. And, but because of a date for the end, which doesn't really, it, oh, and I should say, this is against what it says on the rack, by the way, the agreement. It is against that because of the timing. It's supposed to be 30 days. But we thought that was very disrespectful to Fred to do 30 days from the date that he died. So we were in agreement, the Selectmen agreed with me, when I, you know, when I suggested, could we just, you know, kind of suspend that rule for this, for this appointment? So, yes, Dawn?
I had one more follow-up. So I respect that one of our members is not available September 12. So just looking ahead to the dates you mentioned, perhaps the joint meeting may not be until October.
Right.
So our meeting is scheduled in October early on the 9th. So I would hope that a joint meeting can be scheduled before October 9?
It is.
Because I would want that whoever.
When I spoke to Carl Kowalski.
So that's what I wanted to talk through these dates.
Right. When I spoke to Dr. Kowalski this morning, he suggested October, and I said, well, it's going to be October. It needs to be the first week because we have a meeting after that, and we would like to have that person here. You know, sworn in and here. You know, I don't want these spaces. Okay, now, along with that, we have somebody who would like to speak tonight.
Gotcha. Thank you. You know, one of my unique experiences, growing up in our community, which has guided my decision-making over the last five years, was the opportunity to live in and attend both schools in Whitman and Hanson. As a teenager, when deciding whether to pull nomination papers to run for office, I asked myself, what does it mean to be a leader? I came to two conclusions during those internal deliberations. One, I decided that being the leader meant not having to be the most intelligent individual in the room, but being receptive and understanding of each other's strengths and utilizing those abilities in the areas warranted when those moments are justified. Understanding who is best fit for the particular situation and uplifting them to be successful in the endeavor, what will help us succeed collaboratively as a community. Prioritizing the success of the collective over our individual needs is what makes for a successful leader. They need to make those decisions earnestly to withstand the objective yet judgmental view through the lens of hindsight. The second conclusion I came to took me back to my days at Hanson Middle School. At the age of 12, long before I was aware of my interest in history and politics, a teacher was already keenly aware that my passion was there. Mrs. Bloss would pull me aside after mock debates in class, asking, have you ever thought about being a lawyer? It was Mrs. Bloss who shared with the class a story that has never left my mind from the moment it was spoken to us. That is the story of Cincinnatus. It is a story about a Roman farmer who came out of retirement multiple times to serve his constituency during a period of need, but relinquished that responsibility and absolute power that came with it when the original objective he was called upon had been served. Setting an example of the importance of understanding the responsibility that comes with position to power bestowed upon someone at any level of elected office. The need to evaluate the health of the institution consistently and understanding that any institution dependent on one individual for too long in our democracy is reflective of a failure of those who have been serving it. Perfecting a better union is understanding the importance of the constant change and deliberations that come with it. Serving and leading our communities during times of need only, not letting ego or desire impede our judgment. Our communities are most robust when we elevate and educate the public, providing them with a support network to get involved and also an understanding of the issues at hand. I campaigned at the age of 19 to change our community's culture, deliver an ambitious platform of services for our district, and empower student voices to represent McKinley-Vento, foster youth, and students struggling with circumstances beyond their control. Understanding the significance of the impact left by the Great Recession and opioid epidemic as someone who grew up in it and now witnessing a whole generation of youth now dealing with the aftermath of a pandemic. Since I left high school and ran for office, nine out of 10 of our school committee members, four out of five Hanson Select Board, and three out of five Whitman Select Board have left office. We've had a sweeping change of representation across the community, which is more optimistic, welcoming, and supportive of the next generation of leadership. Over the last few years, I've seen our community's culture shift in a direction more reflective of our community as a whole. Parents have organized, used their voices, and helped deliver results that will impact our community for generations, such as the expansion of early childhood education and the new middle school in Whitman. That said, it is most appropriate at this time for the torch to be passed to the next generation of young parent leaders who are ready to represent our district and lend their voices and experiences to the next emerging generation. I will resign as Whitman representative, as a Whitman representative to the PK through 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee effective September 1st. I will send my formal resignation to the town clerk. I will continue to build upon the foundation of my experiences learned here by pursuing higher education to expand my capacity to contribute. Before the retirement of former facilities director Ernie Samlin, Ernie asked me a simple question that I struggled to answer. He asked me, what have you learned? For so many years now, I've gone back and forth, lacking clarity in a dignified response that I found would be sufficient and lasting. After much consideration, I'd like to extend my response to Mr. Samlin, our colleagues on the committee, and our community as a whole. You must never leave with indignation, regardless of any circumstances that have caused a believed justification of such emotions. Some of our most significant opportunities for growth are from our dissenters. Understanding views we wouldn't necessarily be privy to unless we took the time to listen. Ideology does not dominate the mindset of this committee. But personality and life experience has helped guide and shape our views. Empathy has been our greatest asset in achieving results these last few years. Unity over the shared belief that we may have different approaches, but a common goal of improving our community. I would look towards no tuition, full-day kindergarten, K through 10 school choice, and even last year's reaffirmation of the budget as a few examples. It would be naive to suggest that everyone who disagrees with you does so from a constructive standpoint. Regardless of the origin of their nature, you must approach a situation the same way, with an open mind, a willingness to learn, and a passion for your community. Our capacity to help our community is determined by our ability to educate and build relationships with those within it. We should look past politics and towards a shared belief that people want an excellent education for their kids, a safe and healthy environment to live in, and affordability to choose the life they wish to pursue. Developing a community-first network mitigates an ineffective bureaucracy that feels to be more responsive to the collective's needs. Leading in the public office involves prioritizing the needs of our community when making difficult decisions. It's about setting an example and doing what you believe is suitable for the longevity of the constituency we represent. Making decisions earnestly and not based on what's expedient or popular. Thank you to my teachers for providing me with the tools needed to succeed in this role. These experiences have shaped and guided me. Thank you to my colleagues on the committee for everything. My time here has set the foundation for how I can contribute going forward. I want to specifically thank Dawn Byers for not only believing me as far back as my senior year at only 18 years old, but for giving me the motivation to run at 19 and supporting me onwards to be at my best. Thank you for our community, which put the belief behind a teenager just out of high school. It's the parents I've never met walking out of Town Hall on Election Day with their kids pointing my way, mouthing, I voted for you. Or the people who pulled me aside while walking around town to thank me for what I'm doing. You folks have provided me all the motivation in the world. You folks have provided me all the motivation in the world. I thank you. If we are to hold these beliefs, our district motto will remain true. Semper at Majora. Always towards the greater. My friends on the committee, I thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Are you going to law school?
Someday.
Someday.
I'm going to my brother's office, and she'll take care of it. So, as you can see, folks, now this changes, that we now have two positions that are going to be... So we are going to, I need to talk to town Whitman, too, again, but we will be advertising for two. So come May, there will be four people chosen in May. Because two to finish. Is it all in Whitman?
It's all in Whitman.
Yeah, it's all Whitman, yeah.
So, the...
Well, we're not saying that, because Steve, I know, has to run.
Yeah, just where we're at right now, it'll be two three-year terms, one two-year term, and one one-year term.
I have a...
You going to run again, Mr. Boyce?
Well, I have a print of the stuff that says, Fourth Voice 2026. I got to get him on the phone right now. David?
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, you know what you mean to me, man. At least we still got Dunkin' Donuts.
We've still got another week, and I'll be here tomorrow, too, for the tour. I will serve until I can.
Put me in a headlock. Remind me of what Fred used to do.
I want to speak on behalf of the committee, and everybody can, you know, go talk to David afterwards, but a voice of youth that we had on here before I got on, and before, you know, when I used to listen to David, voiced his opinion, sometimes louder and longer than maybe we wanted, but always true to himself. And I thank you for being that person who is always true to yourself, David. We will miss you greatly, and it's nice to have you here that we can say that, unlike, you know, for Fred, but we can tell you how much we have appreciated you being on this committee, and we will miss you definitely. And when you are at school break or whatever, come on in, come to a meeting and visit.
Don't tempt me.
We have to know where you're going to school. What's going on here?
Well, you can always ask afterwards, and I will figure it out in time, but yeah.
By all the switches, we're going to get the...
He does, listen, we spent many a time in the car driving around. We talked about, you know, and it's bittersweet, because David said this tonight, but it's bittersweet, because he's done a really nice job on the committee, but I'm so happy for you to move into what you want to do, too. It's pretty cool.
So is it law?
You know.
I'm sure I'll be...
Good luck to you. Good luck.
And I...
Has.
Oh, sorry, Dawn.
May I since David recognized my name?
Sure.
Speech. I don't know what your next steps are, but you will be missed. And yes, that was powerful, when we had an email connection by chance because you had reached out to the school committee. And those were contentious times when I first got on as well. So I do appreciate what you've given to the committee and the town, and thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So...
Public comment?
No public, any public comments are...
Yeah, we have executive session.
Okay. So we need a roll-hall vote to go into an executive session.[1757.12]